Hey, what's up, guys?
How you doing, man?
We are live.
I'm doing well. How about, how about all of you?
Doing fantastic, everybody. It's terrific. We got a nice little starter quorum. We left this optional for speakers because if I tried to make every call, we do mandatory or bugged people, it turned people off. So we leave it optional. But, but we had some, you know, fan favorites to join, which we tried to make sure Randall would be on and Johanna is one of the hosts. And I wanted to bring Bob on because he's a new speaker and we're gonna have some fun stuff to talk about with him. And we've got a couple of surprises that should be coming in at any moment, but we'll see. And a very special guest, Mr. Cliff Dunning of Earth Ancients. And if anybody follows alternative interpretations of the past, then they probably come across Earth Ancients because it's one of the original podcasts in our space. And Cliff has hundreds of thousands of viewers every month and he has agreed to be a, enthusiastically agreed to be a media partner of the Cosmic Summit. So he's gonna try to bring people to Greensboro from the left coast. And he agrees with me, right, Cliff, that we needed something over here on the, on the right hand, right? We needed something in that land.
Absolutely.
Yeah, man.
Absolutely. Looking forward to it.
And then I have over here with me, if you caught the last livestream, he's joining us again. This is the CEO of the Corey Corp Hotel Hotels, the beautiful Grandover down the street, and the wonderful Sheraton Four Seasons where we'll be hosting the event, Mr. Kelly Harrell.
How's everybody today? Great to see everyone again.
Yeah. And for those that are kind of new to the situation, kind of coincidentally, we had last year in Asheville, right? And it was quite a success. I loved it up there. But I don't know, man. The hotel just wasn't what I wanted for the price. It was a little far from me personally, and Asheville can be difficult to get to. Now, if you've never heard of Greensboro, North Carolina, don't know much about it, one of its benefits, the economy, is it's demographic, well, logistically perfect place.
It is. It's for the state, in middle of the state, middle of the eastern seaboard.
Yeah.
Yeah, perfect.
So you've got a big state that perfectly surrounds it, a 10 million people, and then you've got the whole mid-Atlantic that can get here within three hours. It's, you know, kind of technically, probably the average, the closest drive of anybody in the east coast. On average, this would be the place that would be closer than, than any other place. And it shows it. That's why there's a 28-story hotel here, right, Kelly?
That we're sitting on top of.
Right. And it's actually the tallest building in Greensboro by, whoa, by, I don't know, six or seven stories, right?
Yes, it is.
So it was logistically perfect, but I'm also from here. And I grew up in Greensboro, North Carolina, and just love the town and maintain a lot of friends here and grew up about two miles from here, actually. And so it just, it fit in a lot of ways. And they have rolled out the red carpet for us. And I wanted to just lead and we'll get into speakers and stuff and talk to Kelly a little bit about the hotel, what it has to offer, a little bit about its history. Kelly, tell us about the history of it. It's morphed over the years, right?
It has. It was developed by, by my father-in-law, Joe Corey. He was an Lebanese immigrant whose parents came through Ellis Island in the 20s. They came here, couldn't speak the language and really started with nothing. And through a lot of grit and determination and hard work, built a small construction company that grew into a major construction company. Never went to college, which was interesting, went to Elon College for one day. Yeah, he did. So it's cool. Wasn't for me. I want to build. And he threw, like I said, a lot of hard work and determination, built 10,000 homes here in Greensboro, built the first Holiday Inn in the state of North Carolina on this location, which was an old vineyard many years ago.
Did not know that.
Yeah, it was. There was nothing here. And grew it. And one day he had been, he traveled to Atlanta and had seen the first mall down there.
Yeah.
And decided he was gonna build a mall in Greensboro. So he built the first mall in North Carolina. It said, "I'm gonna put a hotel and build a hotel. I'm gonna grow it next to a mall." And the rest is history. It turned into the largest hotel property between Washington DC and Atlanta. Thousand rooms, 250,000 square feet of meeting space, all under one roof. That's the great part for any group, especially the Cosmic Summit, is that even when the event is over, with everyone staying in the hotel, you're able to gather, be here together in the lobbies and the bars and the restaurants. You know, people love this property because it's right off the highway. You've got free parking, don't have to pay for parking. You've got a 200-store super regional shopping mall next door. And then the city of Greensboro is just dynamic. I mean, our downtown area is vibrant. Restaurants, bars, lots of things to do, very close by, easy to get around. So it's, it's, you know, we're obviously biased.
We're biased because it's home.
We're biased, but we think it's a great, great location for an event like this.
Well, Sheraton seems to agree. And I just wanted to point out, maybe Kelly will get that. I ordered up some beers. It's my birthday. I might as well admit it now, okay? It's my damn birthday.
Happy birthday.
Which is a little bit, you know, self-centered to have such an event on your birthday. But after the last one, I was looking at and I said, "We need to do one mid-February." And I said, "Well, I'm gonna do it on Friday. Well, the 16th is my birthday and if I fuck things up, everybody will have to be nice to me." Okay?
We'll see about that.
We'll see about that, won't we, Dr. Carlson? Oh, gosh. I love the origin story of the hotel, Kelly. And I want to stress, if you've never been to this part of the South, it truly is a hospitable place. This will be the nicest place that, that you've ever met. It'll surprise you. I just had a friend move back to North Carolina after 25 years in DC and it shocked him how nice everybody was. And that is exemplified in this hotel by congratulations, you just won the Atlantic Coast Conference Tournament for two more years in Greensboro, didn't you?
We sure did, yeah. Absolutely.
Okay, now that place can technically be held anywhere on the east coast and every big city on the east coast, well, these days, even into the Midwest and everything, right?
Sure.
Compete for it. And they want it. So why does it come back to Greensboro? Because it's just a damn good place to be and people enjoy staying here. And y'all are too. So we want to encourage people to buy those passes. We're calling them passes instead of tickets. Tickets just sound so transactionally crude. But I'm gonna show you the passes. We've sold out all of the Atlantean passes. Sales are going very well. They're taking in a few a day. And, but we simply can't have enough because the earlier and the more that we sell, the earlier we sell them, the more I'm able to adjust the program and frankly, spend more money and be more confident that we could do XYZ. We could even add more speakers if in a month or two from now, I felt really confident, we could open up a, a, a third track. But we'll walk through some of that. Let's see, maybe just some introductions that people don't know y'all yet. Bob Griner. Well, let me start with Randall. I'll start, start at the top. I think I've already introduced Cliff of Earth Ancients. Please go follow, like his podcast. And Mr. Randall Carlson, I think needs very little introduction, but we're thrilled to have him here to get again today and at the summit again this year. And if you don't know Randall, he's not hard to find in a lot of different ways, right? He is a very frequent Joe Rogan guest. Will probably be going on again, maybe before the summit, you think, Randall?
I hope so.
Okay.
Yeah, we exchanged a few emails a month or two ago. And so it's kind of, you know, keeping it, keeping it alive, the possibility.
Well, I, I hope I'm not overtelling here, but my impression through the years with you, as you've gone on Rogan, is he's generally courting you to come on the show. I mean, he, he, like, hardened you. Give me a, I mean, you, you got to be literally one of the very few people, I couldn't even think of another, that has to kind of get bugged to go on Joe Rogan.
Well, I've always willingly gone, but I will say, you know, the first time I went on was through a reference from Graham Hancock. That's what got me on, on Joe's show the first time.
Well, that was a very fruitful invitation there and it worked out for you and Joe and the millions of people who, who like your brand of esoteric and deep understanding of both the earth and the human past. Let me turn over to Bob Griner. And hi- his name might be new to you, but you can become addicted to him like I have. And I started my addiction about eight years ago. And I can't say I saw every single video he has at the Martin Fleishman Memorial Project is his channel on YouTube. And that is, Martin Fleishman is an honor for one of the, the original modern cold fusion, most prominent cold fusion heretical scientists that claimed that there were different paths to access energy and power in, through physics. And we're gonna have Bob give a little bit of an explanation of that. But Bob increasingly, as some of the others who'll be joining in soon, we've got a couple of other people who are kind of following the same path, attributes it to the ancients, right, Bob? That you think that they may have somehow had knowledge of the same kinds of physics that you have. Is that fair?
Well, certainly that wasn't my intention to go down that path. It's, it's a natural extension of exploring the way nature works. So I, I set out with an aim to have more children. And, and I bought into the global warming narrative and, and thought, well, I've got one child, but I want more, but I need to do this responsibly. So the way I'm gonna have to solve this conundrum is to find a new energy source. And so I took myself to ICCF 17 in 2012 in Dijon.
That's the International Cold Fusion Conference.
Yeah, well, I mean, they call it condensed matter in nuclear science. Cold fusion was the name given to the process of, by Stephen E. Crivitt. Not Stephen Crivitt, sorry, Stephen. Stephen E. Jones. And he was, he had a competing theory at the time, which is generally accepted of muon catalyzed fusion. Well, we managed to set up an open project, five of us. We were all new to the field. We went there because of a controversial figure who was rather flamboyant, an Italian called Andrea Rossi. And that gave us the, you know, that, if, if it hadn't been for him, for all of his challenging times since, we would, we would not have gone there. But we set up this open project and the view was, a lot of these people were passing on and they had the same kind of processes they were identifying. However, they had about 70 different theories and at least 69 of them must be wrong. And, and none of them wanted to.
Like the Kennedy assassination.
Yeah.
We know who did it. We just don't know which book is right.
Yeah. It's a bit like that. So, so our view was, people are not helping each other because they all wanted to win the Nobel Prize. And they're not gonna help someone else win the Nobel Prize. It's all this kind of intellectual snobbery that goes on. And, and if someone was having success, some either government cutout or actual genuine private company would come in and ask them to spin plates until they died. And so the only way that we could see is if we radically changed the way the science was done. And so we asked for any of them to provide their materials to us for us to replicate. And within a couple of months, we replicated Francesco Chilani of Italian National Frascetti Institute. And we saw about 12 and a half percent. And I presented that on the 14th of December 2012 in an army base, military base in Rome. And from that time, we haven't really looked back. Unfortunately, in a way, I almost wish that I hadn't seen the excess heat in, in some respects because my life would have been a lot simpler since. I could have walked away from it thinking that isn't the right way. But unfortunately, when you see it so early on, you go, "Oh, no, now I have to understand it." And so it's been a series of, I, I kind of wish this is true, but I hope it doesn't turn out to be true because I have to continue. It keeps happening. And so to cut a long story short, when it got to around about 2015, we were invited to another researcher, Professor Piantelli from CNA, formerly from CNA University. He discovered the nickel hydrogen system. And he told me something really profound that I took on board, which is, don't tell nature what it is, let it show you. And I, I kind of thought, well, okay, from all of this time, we're being told by the, the dogma of the scientific orthodoxy, we should look for neutrons, gamma rays and, and X-rays. And these are the things that are not commonly found in this, emitted from this process. Although we did find something that got a company down in Texas very interested in us. And it turns out that that company I found out in 2016 was set up by Hal Putoff. But he was, that was the first group that actually reached out to us in 2013. We repeatedly see these emissions coming from the device. So I completely changed and the project changed its approach where, where we were trying to find these things that people are expecting and telling us we should find. We were gonna say, right, like, we have all these independent researchers and, and essentially this is, it's funded by the crowd. The research has been done by volunteers. It's a volunteer project, always has been. And we, we created this thing called Live Open Science where we actually published the experimental, what we wanted to do, what we were gonna replicate, the procedures we were gonna go through, how we were gonna sample the data, what the schematics of the reactor was, what the protocol for the reaction was. And then for the, the old whole experiment. And then anyone could comment at any stage of the process. And then we would publish the data and the make, you know, making the reactor and everything, every part of the process. We would publish it live on the internet. And this was before the big data acquisition companies even had a means to do this. We actually developed our own, Ryan Hunt of Hunt Utilities developed that. And so when, when we, so, so it gave us quite a lot of credibility. And then, then we started seeing things in experiments that were, other people were doing experiments and they were sending their, their ash, as it were, either, or they were inviting us to go and visit them. So we, we visited Dr. Royshin Amazza with his Amazza gas and vibration systems.
Let me pause for just a second. Just so it ties people in because people are like, "Well, what the hell am I going to?" Is this some kind of energy conference, which, which does have a nice Venn diagram and people will be interested in it. But you draw it, ultimately, you went in with not a bunch of ancient history knowledge and symbolism and understanding of all that, but you've developed it because the science led you to think that the ancients had access to this.
Yeah, so basically these patterns we kept seeing in experimental data, they were essentially hydrodynamic vortex and results thereof. And what is that? Well, a hydrodynamic vortex is if you take a plate and you put it into water, it creates a vortex and then antivortex. And it creates what's called a falotosoliton. That structure is essentially a, a ionian column. And the interesting thing is, if you take Thales of Thales theorem, his pupil was Anaxiumander. And Anaxiumander was probably the, the first person that was doing observational science long before other people were giving credit for him. And so he looked at nature, but he also looked at the ancients. And so that whole type of architecture, ionic columns and so forth came out of that. And it's, it's, it's also in the masonry you see in very many famous buildings. And of course, this whole technology comes out of charge separation. And if you take what Faraday did, he put two electrodes into some electrolyte, you know, with some cabbage water, and you get a vortex one way and a vortex the other way. And red and, and because of the ions and the charge separation. And there was a polymath that came in and, and looked at what he was doing. And he says, "Oh, that looks like an ionic column." And that's where the term ions comes from chemistry. So observational science of what happens in nature and the ancient architecture and stuff led to a form of architecture that then led to the term, which leads to the actual technology. It's, it's one whole virtuous cycle that spans many, many thousands of years. And so it's, it's absolutely crazy. So now, what, what I ultimately found was these processes were run by a natural process called ball lightning. And ball lightning, people may not aware, is, it's probably a manifestation of all of these things you see in UFOs and, and, and large flight objects and stuff. But essentially, it comes down to one structure and it is the same as the human anatomy.
Okay, drop the mic right there.
And that bit here is the Uconovasara. No, it's not the Tesla logo, or that's more accurate, by the way. And it's that part on the human anatomy. And that is the bit that changes epsilon zero in spacetime, which is the dielectric constant of spacetime. And that allows you to go faster than light. It allows to rip matter apart. The structure itself can assemble matter. It's yin and yang and it's perfectly yin and yang. So we have an experiment.
Seen witness marks of that. Bob, let me move on because we're still doing introductions. Fine. Okay, we got Luke Caverns here. Should be familiar to people. He's got 700,000 followers on TikTok. He's joined every Cosmic Summit event that we've had. He spoke last year. And, you know, he's an anthropologist with interest in archaeology and concentrates in Mesoamerica. But Luke, you also want to get over in Egypt. I know you've just been dying to join the snakes and Ben and the rest of them who are over there right now, right?
Yeah, yeah. I'm, I'm about sick to my stomach.
Yeah.
Being stuck over. Yeah, I would love to, I'd, I'd love to, well, I'm going to Egypt twice this year and, and then early in 2025. But as much as I'd love to do a presentation someday over Egypt, probably this year, I'm gonna be covering some of my findings from my expedition to Mexico in December. And then I go back to, I go back to Mexico in about 10 days and I'll be there for a month. And I'll be doing an Olmec expedition. So I'll be seeing every megalithic Olmec head, altar and monument, studying their connection, potential connections to the old world, the Mediterranean world. Which I touched on very briefly at the end of my last Cosmic Summit speech. So that, that's probably what I'll be, what I'll be speaking on this year.
That's terrific, man. And everyone knows the talented and beautiful, ever fantastic friend of the Cosmic Summit, Mrs. Johanna James. How are you doing, Miss Johanna James?
I thought you were gonna say Randall then.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, great.
Yeah, talented, maybe, beautiful.
Why not? I'm, I'm good. I'm excited. Well, this year is, is even more of a challenge hosting because we've got a double track.
Right.
But I'm not hosting alone because I'm gonna be co-hosting with Micah Hanks. Because otherwise it'd be like Mrs. Doubtfire. I'd be running between. It'd be crazy. But I'm excited. So challenge, we've got double speakers, two stages. I think that I'm gonna talk about Ancient India. Last time I did kind of Atlantis stuff, but there is huge stuff going on in Ancient India. I've got to check that I'm not gonna step on Praveen's toes with anything. But I have a special place in my heart for the Barbar caves and not many people know about them. And so I've got permission and some really good footage that I can use. And I want to show people and kind of explain how out of place the Barbar caves are and how they potentially could link to other sites around the world where you see really crazy precision cutting into granite, polishing of granite that's not really replicated ever again until the modern day. Ah, what's going on? There's a mystery. So I think I'm gonna do India.
Fantastic. And Barbar caves are amazing. We're gonna talk about these vases. And I just heard from one of the leading vase experts, had a little bit of technical trouble and he's joining us. But these are the pre-dynastic vases, which I'll explain in greater detail later. But I find the Barbar caves to be kind of, hmm, the architectural cousin to them.
It's very similar, right? Like you've got, on the one hand, you've got these vases and on the other hand, you've got these kind of caves that are also circular. And it's the, it's the same magic maths of getting, getting the angle. Because there's one thing to cut, to cut granite on, on the straight. But to do it on a designed curve that is perfection all the way around and, yeah. And I also found out, I'm gonna save it, I'm gonna save it, I'm gonna save it. You have to come to the summit.
Okay, yeah, don't give all your good stuff. Okay. Hey, Ken, how you doing, buddy? Good to see you.
I was able to connect.
Yeah. Dr. Tankersley, University of Cincinnati. What are you gonna be talking about, Ken? Give it to us real quick and then I'm gonna move on to other parts of the agenda.
Oh, sure. This year I'm gonna talk about the Younger Dryas and how we use forensic evidence to tease out the difference between catastrophic volcanism during the Younger Dryas and cosmic impact events during the Younger Dryas. And I'm gonna use, take a view from the Maya site Tikal, which is the most famous Maya city-state in all the Maya lowland and Maya highland as well. And we'll hopefully show some exciting data that hasn't been seen before.
Fantastic, Ken. Okay, I want to go into a little bit of, well, let's, let's talk a little bit about the program. And then I wanted to show you the three new aspects to the summit this year, which are poster presentations, vendors and volunteers. But I wanted to turn to the program and we can maybe let Kelly get out of here. We're gonna do it a little bit differently this year and that we're gonna have two tracks, okay? And what that allows us to do is to double the number of speakers. Because I wanted the same speakers back last, this year that we had last year.
Same speakers back last, this year that we had last year?
We just got joined by Matt and we're getting a little ping.
Getting a ping from me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
See if you can get that right.
It's like the remix.
And Matt Bell. The Limitless Podcast, which I went on a few weeks ago. And had a wonderful time with him and his wife.
Is that, is that better? Are you still hearing it?
Let's see.
No, no.
All good?
No, it's still peeing back. Just mute yourself just for a minute. Yeah, that, that's fine. But, but Matt Bell's a new friend of our subjects and a very, very significant one. And I'll explain that a little bit more when we get him back on. But what we're doing this year is having two tracks. Because if I had the same 15 people back, it'd be the exact same show and that's no fun. And I just couldn't bring myself to say, okay, you, you and you are cut because they're some of the dearest friends in the world and I love every one of them's content. So your only choice then is to either cut everyone's time or add space and run another track. And we had all the space in the world.
We're lucky.
We could, we could run 10 tracks in this place. It is absolutely, you know, I found out last time, it's, the, the room is one acre. And if you don't know how big an acre is, you're gonna know after you come to the Cosmic Summit because you're gonna be sitting inside of an acre, which is pretty big and 35-foot ceilings and whatnot. But we're gonna right-size the room to our specifications. Yep. And what we're gonna do is break up into two tracks. We're gonna have main stage programming and then, hey, Malcolm, how you doing? Good to see you, buddy.
Well, contested as usual, but always like.
Well, I hope it was nothing, I hope I didn't give you any bad links or anything like that. But we're just going through some introductions and I'll get to you in a minute. Well, actually, I'll switch back to you for an introduction in a minute and finish my riff right now. So we're splitting it into two tracks and both of those will be available to all the attendees, obviously, but also to the live streamers. And for gosh sakes, I hadn't even brought up that this entire event is gonna be livestreamed. And those livestream passes are available as of about an hour ago at cosmicsummit.com. And we put a raw bottom, they were $50 last year. They're $25 this year. At least for the early bird, okay? Now, I don't know how long the early bird is gonna sit. That bird may fly. The, you know, the, the greed impulse may kick in or the, "I ain't gonna make it and I'm gonna go broke" impulse, which I experienced last year. So we made jack that up a little bit. Now, it's not gonna go above 50, which was last year. But I really do encourage you that I may come to my senses and raise that price. So go in now and get a $25 virtual pass to see everything on the weekend. And then there's another option to see the Monday Classroom Days. And I think we talked about in the last livestream, certainly have in other communications. But if you go at cosmicsummit.com, you'll see that what we're doing this year is having two days of speakers in a two-track program. And then on Monday, we're gonna have deep dives on subjects that require, for those that are truly interested in them and want to get up to speed and have seen all the 101 and, you know, 201 courses on this, you're gonna have a 300 and a 400 level. And that's on Monday. And for instance, Randall has a classroom that is gonna be all his. And then he's gonna pick a small team of people if he likes, or he can go at it himself, or he can just have his people around to, to, to chime in as necessary. But he's gonna have from 8:00 to roughly 5:00 o'clock on the stage with anybody he likes in a separate room with, they've got these beautiful auditoriums. But we're actually thinking about reclassing two of the breakout rooms and just making them the classrooms. And that would actually give us up to 500 people per room if people wanted to, to, to do that. But it's just a really exciting opportunity on Monday to either buy a pass and come in person. So you, these are separable. So both in the virtual passes and the attendance passes, you can buy the, buy it for the weekend and come Friday night where we're gonna have the party, Saturday and Sunday. Or you can purchase one standalone for Monday and just come for Monday and go to the class of your choosing. Okay? So those three classes, just to give you a little bit, and we may open a fourth, is Malcolm Bendall, who we'll introduce in a moment. And he'll be talking with Bob Griner, who we just heard from. And, and some others, up to them to select who they want to communicate this information best with. And that may be one of the most significant lecture days in the history of mankind. May. And I think it actually is, okay? But you gotta throw your maize in there just to cover your ass and make your family think you're not completely crazy, okay? So, yeah, yeah, like Bob Griner. That's right. So uh yeah, 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 like Bob Griner. That's right. That's right. It attracts these types. But um so that's deep dive on Monday. Those tickets and those passes are available now, but I wanted to go through a couple of other new. Uh initiatives that we got at the Cosmic Summit. Okay, and you can find these on the website now. They just went live today. I even kinda forget how it looks, but up at the top, you'll be able to navigate to uh poster presentations. Vendor exhibitors and volunteers now. And I think the most exciting, uh at least for. You know, everybody but me. I love having volunteers and love having exhibitors. But to add to the audience enjoyment and to the idea base, we're gonna open it up for academic-style poster presentations. And if you've uh not experienced that thing, that kinda uh showcase. Then here's how it works. When you go to an academic conference, say it's a uh. You know, geological conference, American Geological Society, right? You're gonna have presentation after presentation after presentation, kinda like we're doing today, except generally those can be like fifteen minutes long. So they just knock them out. And but if you're not accepted to present, you can or you can apply separately to just give a poster. At the conference and that is what it sounds like. They hang up a poster. At whatever conference it is. I went to the American Geophysical Union that they have twenty or thirty thousand people in the poster hall. You couldn't see every poster. It is massive out in San Francisco in the Marconi Center. And there were hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of posters. And I hope that we'll at least have dozens. And here's the exciting part too, that there's a real element to our studies and our interests. That um a certain class of people have got a voice in it and have got groundbreaking ideas and. A lot of those are on the call and many more are gonna be speaking. Then there's a class of folks that that haven't found a public voice yet. But have just as interesting ideas and have worked as hard or harder than the people who you know the names of. But they're out there kinda like I am. They're pajama scientists. Back when I was working the Carolina Bays twenty years ago, nobody was listening. I would have loved to have had an opportunity to say, hey, there are a bunch of these dimples on the East Coast and they all happened at the same time and it means there was a cataclysm. Here's my poster showing that. Okay, so we have a poster submittal page. If you have an interesting hypothesis, some data to back it up, then submit a poster. And then we're gonna review all those posters and here's the punchline. For the three that seem most interesting to us in our little editorial committee. We're gonna give them twenty minutes each on the main stage if they can make it to Greensboro. Okay? So kind of a lightning round of the JV team. And it's gonna be at lunch, right? Because we don't wanna go knock somebody else out of one of those very valuable spots and I'm sure people will be happy to talk. I sure would have been in the old in the old days. Um over lunch. So the people might be clinking and clanking out there and stuff, but they're gonna give their shot twenty minutes each bang, bang, bang. Um for whatever the great ideas and we don't know what that is yet, but it's gonna pop up. Yeah. Um. What else before maybe letting Kelly out of here? Uh I wanna stress the free parking.
Uh it's a big deal.
It is a big deal. There's nothing worse.
Any any uh any large city in the country that's got a hotel convention center, you're gonna pay twenty or thirty dollars a night for parking. So it's significant. You know?
And it's a pain in the ass too.
Yeah, it is.
You know, and this place you just pull up, drop your car and walk in. You know, and when you wanna go, go jump in your car and go out. You don't have to pay anybody or get any little numbers or go past any electronic boxes and stuff. So it's the little things that are important in hospitality and that is a key feature.
George, as someone who doesn't know the area, um what is there around?
It 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 is the dead center of the finest state in the United States. So two hours, two hours to your west, you have the mountains, two hours to your east, you have the coast.
Right.
Okay, and Greensboro is historically known as one of the most significant um revolutionary um war battle sites. And it actually turned the tide for the uh revolutionaries.
General Green, who was uh in Cornwallis, had uh one of the their largest battles right here in Greensboro and it's a great battle park here, the Revolutionary Battle Park. But we have a huge civil rights history as well here um in Greensboro that goes way back to the, you know, civil rights days of the fifties and sixties. Um and a museum where the actual sit-in movement actually happened is still in the Woolworth Building downtown, which is great. A great place to visit. Um and great museums in the area, great parks in the area, a really vibrant downtown. Mentioned earlier with great bars and restaurants. Um it's uh it's got a really great uh city feel to it. It's a large city, but with a small town feel.
Yeah, I'd recommend, you know, stay next day in Greensboro and um and then take off and do a couple of days at the coast or up in the mountains. It's a perfect time to take a southern vacation.
You're one hour from Raleigh, uh you're one hour from Charlotte. And uh if anybody out there is a uh Andy Griffith fan, uh we are about thirty minutes from Mayberry. We actually are at the top of the building. We're looking out there and seeing uh the mountain that.
This might be going right past people, you know, but it is. People have heard of the shit. But you know, there's a a town called Mount Pilot, you know? Well, I can literally see Pilot Mountain from here and that is a monadoc. Hey, Randall, do you know what a monadoc is?
I think I've always pronounced it monadnok, but.
Do you know you're a paranormal scientist when you pronounce things wrong? That means you've read it a thousand times but have no idea how to pronounce it, right? And that happens to me all the time. A monadnok? Is that what you call it?
Yeah, I knew that, George.
Did you really? Okay, well, I can see a monadnok. It is as flat as a board all the way until you see this monadnok. Which is a a extinct volcanic plug, right? It's kind of the frozen interior of a volcano with nothing left but the lava. And it's. Out like an enraged pimple in 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 central North Carolina. I mean, it is very, very interesting. That you have nothing like that and then all of a sudden, boom, it's it's very strange. Hey, that ain't a bad day trip.
And it's a it's a beautiful uh national park.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Tuesday day trip up to the.
The monadnok, which is a really unusual geological feature that's of, you know, half hour, forty-five minute drive from here.
And visit Aunt Bee.
Yeah, and visit Aunt Bee too and see some of the nicest damn people on earth.
But Friday night, we're having a party, so we actually don't even need to leave the hotel.
No, we really don't. You don't wanna tell people that because they're like, but you don't, you don't need to. Yeah, we're at this season on Friday night. It holds up to a thousand people. And it's gonna be sponsored uh or is being sponsored by um Social House Vodka. And I meant to have a bottle here. I cannot believe it. But the next town hall like this, roughly a month from now, a little bit longer, I think. We're uh gonna have, it's gonna be all around Social House, okay? And talking about that vodka and playing that up and talking about the party and uh. Still trying to secure a good comedian for that.
Shots, shots, shots.
Yeah, 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 it's gonna be that kinda scene, man. But the the disco is a time machine from the uh late seventies, early eighties. And Joe Corey uh built that thing and he wanted to build the biggest disco around and he sure as hell did, man. And they've kept it preserved with all the brass polished in the red leather, all nice and supple.
Light show.
In the light show. I mean, it is.
Bring your disco flares.
Badass facility. And I I, you know, stress again, this is a privately owned facility. Right? We're not going into the hands of a corporation. We're going into the hands of uh the Corey's. And um and their extended family who still run the entire operation. I'm having dinner with uh Kelly's brother-in-law. Uh and uh sister-in-law tonight, in fact. So it's really, you know, it's a neat place. I can't stress it enough. Um, hey, Dan Warren, how you doing, man?
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Sorry, I'm having a little bit of technical difficulties getting on, so I was struggling to get here, but. Thank you guys for having me on. Good to see you.
Hey, man, it's good to see you too. For um those that don't know, Dan Warren has a super fast-growing. Quick takes on UFOs almost every day. How long do they get? I shouldn't call them quick takes. That's kinda downgrading it. I mean.
I consider myself the fast food of UFO of ufology. So mine are. My videos are basically designed to be as short and concise as possible for reaching out to the demographic of people that don't have time to sit down. And watch a one-hour podcast or watch a movie about it. So I'm just trying to make short little videos that give people an update on what's going on. At this moment, and I try to provide context around the event with some historical background information. So that you can kinda try and relate your thoughts around the significance of what's going on. But yeah, some of my videos are a minute long, but I have some that are thirty-minute long. I've also recently sat down with Representative um Andy Ogles. Out of Tennessee and had an hour-long conversation with him that I put up on my YouTube channel. So. Uh it it's just a fun topic to be in and I try to make it enjoyable and fun to watch.
Hey, this is actually a good time for a disappointing announcement. Um. For the time being, we've paused the UFO classroom. We're gonna, Dan's still got a a role and he's still speaking. But what happened was we were wrapping the UFO classroom around Mr. Chris Bledsoe, the uh experiencer here in North Carolina. And we heard from Chris and his agent last week and they just signed some kinda deal and they've actually got to work a movie in June. So with great regret, they pulled out. So we're gonna bring in some other names. So I took the UFO classroom down right now because it was headlined by Chris. And we're gonna reformulate it. Uh I'm working with Micah Hanks on that, right? And uh we're gonna bring that back in. And again, UFOs, there's some reason to believe, and I think Randall could speak to this. That that it could be related to a breakaway civilization. So there's a little bit of tie-in with the summit, but it's also just intrinsically interesting to our audience, I think. So we wanted to have some space for UFO talk and we've got a big one and that'll mostly occur on Monday. Yeah.
So I'll I'll try them in and just say that I'm not terribly disappointed to hear that because the only reason I wanted to be a speaker at this thing was so that I could get.
Oh, no.
Intrigued.
So that you could get the note, Johanna James.
There he is.
Oh, the double down.
Yeah, sorry. I don't know what's going on. My first time using this thing.
Sorry, man. It 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 using that, but you I won't go into the technical stuff, but this thing helps us out a lot.
Dimension theory happening in front of us. It's like, wow.
You were just about to give us the punchline, Dan.
Yeah, so I I've just, I don't really mind not having the UFO classroom because my hope was to get to watch all of the speakers that are there. Because my first love is megalithic architecture. That's what I dove into the deepest uh uh when I was younger. But the traveling associated with getting into the weeds of that was too significant to overcome. But you can study UFOs from your your couch. So that but I so I'm very excited about being able to listen to all the other speakers.
That's an awesome insight to your work, Dan. I didn't know that, that you started with megaliths, man. But uh.
Well, well, one of the things, one of the things that I do tell people is I feel like if the more that we learn going forward about UFOs. The more that we're gonna learn about our past and it's gonna, if we. We might learn something that's gonna fill in some blanks for us that we didn't recognize and know before. That's my hope.
Converging like never before. It hasn't completely met, but ancient history and UFOs has never been talked about more frequently. And uh maybe we'll talk about some of those details later. But hey, I got another surprise guest for you folks. The shaman, Mr. Malcolm Bendall. Hey, Malcolm, how you doing, buddy?
That contested but still bad.
I love contested is Malcolm's great term that I use all the time now when you're fighting the tech. And you're like, the tech seems to know I need it right now and it's just being elusive. Somebody who's out there messing with me, you know what I mean? That's contested. So think about that the next time you're freaked out and saying that the world has turned against me. I can't get this thing to work, which has happened to us at the summit some. But Malcolm, um I hesitate to introduce you because I tell you, you are such a polymath. Uh and are into so many things, but what you are known for now and have been known to the world for for about a year. Since we went down to the Joe Rogan program with Randall. And you and Randall went and did what I thought was a fantastic interview. But it truly did knock Joe's socks off and he got cold feet when he got his socks off, right? And I think it was because frankly, and I don't think Malcolm would disagree with this, his technology has tremendous commercial implications. Right? And he don't know whether it works or not, you know, and all does it work, does it work, does it work? And Malcolm has a technology that uh the first implementation and there is much more to come. And Malcolm has thought all of this out and has detailed plans for it. The first implementation is called the Thunderstorm Generator. And you can uh Bob Griner goes in great detail on the on the device and you can see that at the Martin Fleishman Memorial Project YouTube. But Malcolm, I'll leave it to you. Could you give us a description of the Thunderstorm Generator? And you can also give us any personal um bio or CV that you like. Tell us about you and the device.
Well, I think to start off, um it's been quite an auspicious week and I think it's uh, you know, it's earned this week. This last four podcasts, so uh you know, I think that uh. In this whole journey, the uh I would say that the last week has been uh and for the Martin Fleishman Memorial Project. And for the recognition of plasmoids and the potential of uh you know, knowledge, thunderstorm journeys. But you know, Bob's got uh you know, a whole list of uh people that have pursued. Uh the plasmoid path and it's uh, you know, and also, you know, I'd highly recommend people watch his last four podcasts. Especially the intrigue that they see Johanna as talking about, cause intriguing. Uh intriguing that the world's screaming for a a common killer that uh solves the world's problem. And then when you bring it forward, uh it's like, oh my God, we can't have that. You know, it's been quite a paradoxical uh thing for the world. But uh I think.
The 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 people who most won't change and to create a clean future probably are the most hesitant to embrace it, it seems. That there's so much of an ideological push on existing ways to solve the problems that if somebody actually flat-ass might have solved it. It falls under the radar, you know? But we're doing our best to lift it out and.
Yeah, I think but but I think. Yeah, but Bob, I think you should just have a little uh a talk about this week for you, cause it's not been my week. It's uh you're the hero of the week. So uh just maybe you should give a little bit of a, I'm sorry, I missed our most, I've been, you know, uh contested. I think you give a short thing for, been dying to hear Bob your summary of the week.
Go ahead, Bob.
Uh, yeah, I mean Malcolm's techni- so I was very resistant to look at Malcolm's technology because I thought it was probably bogus. Uh and then um someone sent me a video that was recorded about seven years ago of a test he did in Thailand. With a plasmoid coming in and out of the device. And unfortunately, I've seen these things in a similar technology in my view at that time. Called the Global Environmental Energy Technology um from Paul Pantone. And then we had been replicating this type of plasmoid uh or or. Uh plasma-type coherent matter structures in our reactors uh in Holland and in Canada. And so unfortunately, I had to get involved uh and then so I went over and. Well, actually, I had a c- call with him with someone in North Carolina who couldn't remember. He'd met me before um for for about uh forty minutes. Uh because someone advised him to reach out to me because maybe I'd have an explanation. And so I gave my thoughts on it. And then I had quite some lengthy conversations with Malcolm. Uh uh in fact, it was like it was like two two lovers uh first dating, as it were.
Yeah, y'all did hit it off quick.
It was like five into four o'clock in the morning or whatever, day after day after day.
Johanna joined in about the same time.
So 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 then um uh it was a case of, all right, so there's potentially something here. Uh there was a conference going on in Zurich and in the Zurich conference, I said to Malcolm, I said, you can't tell me what I'm gonna say. I'm not gonna tell you what I'm gonna say. I'm just gonna get up there and say it. So he was brave enough to let me as an independent person get up on stage. And say what I thought the system was. I said, I thought it was ball lightning. I said, it's based off ball lightning. And if it is working under this premise, you'll see this thing that's the iron-rich crenelated sphere. Which by the way, looks exactly like the micrometeorites you see in the Younger Dryas analysis. Um uh it it's it's this synthesized. It looks like a brain but in a sphere and it's typically hollow in these systems, um about a couple of micron thick. And and so that was that. That went down uh interestingly and we uh replicated the process there in Zurich. There's about six hundred people in the auditorium. And then a couple of weeks later. Uh he was sending me these pictures of this twenty-four-inch sphere that had been attached as part of a large thunderstorm generator. To a Perkins four hundred KB, I think it was, and maybe Malcolm can correct me. It does at least three hundred kilowatts of electricity generation from diesel. Yeah, and um uh this had been running for about five hundred hours plus on a um. A device that had been tested over the course of about eight years. And he was cut, he'd cut it in half. a device that had been tested over the course of about eight years. And he was cut, he'd cut it in half, uh, which he was very upset about because it cost about $30,000 to make. Uh, but he wanted to see what was inside and he saw these sparkly bits. I said, Malcolm, stop what you're doing. You're going to be contaminating it. Wrap it up and I'll be over there as soon as I can. So I brought some macro photography over and that's when I met Johanna. Uh, she handled some of the cameras there with a lot of wow and ooh and ah, and uh,
So sparkly.
It was so sparkly. And it had these particular.
Certified long boys.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly. Yeah. And it had these particular structures which are hexagonal and pentagonal structures at regular spacing. And I'd seen those before and we'd synthesized them before. And so I said, Malcolm, you know what you have to do now, if I'm going to continue uh, looking at this, you're going to have to cut me some sections and I'm going to need to put it on a large format scanning electron microscope with EDS. And he said, but I want it in the Smithsonian. It's, it's, it's a museum piece. I said, well, then that's my job here done. Goodbye. Then a few days later, he, he sent over someone uh, to Vienna to deliver some sections that he had uh, uh, through much torment had cut out of this thing. And a couple of days or a day later, I, I, I went and looked at it under an SEM in Prague. And I recorded the session from the beginning and within just a few seconds, we found the iron-rich crenellated microspheres. And uh, you know, it's, it's interesting when you make a prediction of such a precise nature without having ever analyzed uh, and analyzed anything that a technology has produced in its history. And it comes out and it looks like if they're 30 microns apart, there was 129 million of these structures. And so these structures appear to be able to uh, capture matter uh, and typically carbon and oxygen fused to silicon and multiples of these fused through to iron. Um, and what it would appear to do, and there's a lot of work to be done. Um, but if, if it's applying itself in the same way that other systems are doing, there is a potential for the disappearing carbon dioxide to actually being, being sequestered in, into silicon and iron. Or to be transmuted to either nitrogen or oxygen. These several, uh, there's many other options, but we're on the process of evaluating this. We're looking for nitrogen, oxygen and, and heavier carbon synthesis at the moment with a beam line that the data will come through in March uh, from a beam line in Finland. But if, if this um, comes true, you may be in a situation where people are paid to drive very large uh, uh, volume engines because they'll be sequestering carbon in the process. So they'll be getting carbon credits for driving the biggest gas guzzles they can afford. It literally turns this scam. It turns this scam from 1971 on its head.
That is, I'm sitting here struggling to show um, some of Johanna's video, but it's frozen in the um, screen share. So I can't even see y'all right now. All I've got is a frozen screen share thing.
Contested, contested, George.
This is pretty contested. I can no longer see y'all.
I can show you what Matt Samoto showed in the 1990s. It's these kind of structures.
That's too deep for him right now, but just.
Oh yeah, that's, that's exactly, that's exactly what you see. Yeah. That's right.
Bob, you mentioned something, Bob, about the, the spherules. And that was the first, when I saw those pictures, the first thing that jumped out at me was I thought of the impact microspherules from the Younger Dryas and the, the dendritic surface pattern. I'm sure uh, Dr. Tankersley will know what I'm talking about, which is indicative of rapid melting and rapid quenching. But of course now we're dealing with really intense energy environment. So when I saw those pictures, I mean, they were almost, you could almost exchange one for the other. So I'm thinking, what kind of an energy environment?
Randall, it's, it's very simple. When you get extreme, uh, firstly, you need a charge separation of the matter. So you need to have free electrons and ions. And then you have extreme hydrodynamic shear. It produces this magnetic structure that has these magnetic cores and that's where it births these microspherules. And um, it's not molten metal. It's, it, these things are constructed and I believe they're coherent matter in, in the center. They're like, they're like a quantum object. And but when they collapse, they present themselves as these crenellated microspheres. And you get them from meteorites. Um, you, you, so there's, there's similar structures observed in Chelyabinsk, but you get them in the meteorites that are found in Australia and in Japan and stuff. So, and, and from airbursts and stuff where these ever incredibly intense energy things. But there's no meteorite in the thunderstorm generator, at least not that I've seen.
Yeah, the, the, the problem that we.
Flying, but. I'm going to disappear for just a moment and reboot in. I'm not the host, so y'all will be fine. See you in a second.
The, the problem we have with the Younger Dryas uh, from our critics is that's exactly what's going on rather than an airburst. Um, because of the plasma generated during a lightning burst, it produces a well-known, exactly what you're describing, what are called fulgurites. And fulgurites, um, again are lightning produced, again plasma energy. And, and our critics are using it to say, there is no Younger Dryas air, airburst. What we're all, we're looking at are these magnetic spherules created by plasmas generated by lightning.
And, and that is actually what they do do that. So, but you'd get it from meteorites as well. So, and, and you can, we've even produced it in water cavitation with aluminium kitchen foil. So it's, it's anywhere where you get this extreme concentration of energy. So it's not that they're mutually exclusive. Yes, you can have them produced in lightning and ball lightning.
But, but with the airburst, you get things like rutile that are being melted. Uh, in other words, we're getting um, microspherules men that were made by elements and minerals that cannot be melted at, at plasma temperatures. And it's those, because if we just went on with the magnetic iron spherules, um, they'd reject us completely. So, and uh,
So doctor, this, this is a challenge for me because these things can melt at much different temperatures. So I have a reactor here and the fused quartz, which is melts at 1700 degrees turns to a liquid, yet the device itself didn't go above 1,050 degrees C. So how does that occur? And it also melts the alumina as well. And so how does that occur? It's because it's thermal melting.
Yeah, I, I don't know if you've read um, in the new Science Open, um, Cosmic Airburst and Cratering Impacts, uh, Volume One has a series of articles about um, various experiments on what can and can be melted at various temperatures. Um, and I'd like to take credit for that, but Christopher Moore, who's not here today, did a lot of those along with Alan West, those, those experiments. However, if we make the argument that the microspherules are created by this, this eliminates essentially most of our data for the Younger Dryas.
Hey guys, let's turn, let's turn back to the inventor for a moment. Mal.
Yeah.
We're holding a, our, our uh, conference, as you well know, is focused on uh, understanding ancient history a little bit better and some of the things that we consider mysteries that actually are explicable when you have the right information. Tell us about your technology and how it relates to the ancients.
Well, actually I think George, like uh, you know, before I start on that, there's just one point is really interesting. Is that when we started this journey, when we started this journey literally, or you know, uh, when I was uh, um, you know, uh, having idyllic uh, existence swimming on my island. And actually it turns out the timing is perfect because if Randall hadn't have gone onto that show, we wouldn't all be here now.
Yeah.
It's absolutely fantastic. And the good thing about it isn't.
That's right, being Joe Rogan.
That at the beginning. Yeah. Well, no, no, well, uh, before that, we were, obviously Randall had the talk with Tucker Carlson and we had the talk with Comcarpeter in India. And then, then you know, we spent, you know, months together and uh, you know, because Randall's got a really good methodology for presenting information. He's an educator. I'm not. So, uh, so, but the, the thing of it was, is if you remember back, the, the thing was that, you know, Randall's focus was, you know, should have, you know, was on the uh, Younger Dryas impact. But isn't it ironic that the exact stuff that, that Bob analyzed and proved actually goes straight back to, Randall was always working on the Younger Dryas, even if none of us knew at the time. I think that's uh, uh, an interesting history. You see what I mean? How it's come full circle, Randall? And Randall also added the micro crystals uh, in lightning strikes. Sorry, um, crop circles, Randall. The micros in the crop circles as well.
Yeah. Which brings in a whole nother dimension to this discussion, which I'm very hesitant to, to get into here, but I may try to address some of that in the, uh, in June.
Hmm.
Well, I think the fantastic thing is going to the. So what's it, George?
No, I was just saying to Randall, give us, just give us a little bit more on that. Um, if you don't want to, that's fine, but you want to, um.
Well, I always hesitate to, you know.
Yeah. Before we go down that road, because that'll be a very long, lovely road. We, we, you're being reminded, George, that we have a ticket to give away.
We do have a ticket to give away. We also want to take some questions, but I tell you, I got hung up again with this crazy screen. Let me come back in.
You're looking like a grandma who's first time on Zoom.
Actually, it's interesting. You talked about the uh, the crop circles there, Malcolm. The very first time I mentioned the crenellated spheres uh, in a presentation was in Russia in Sochi in 2018. And I showed a picture uh, of a, a, a close up on a, a ear of corn with a series of three magnetic spherules attached to the top of it. I think it's a very famous image. So, yeah. Um, they're very, they're very specific and they're hollow. They're not, they're not melts. They're, they're quite different. Um, the, the structures that we synthesize, uh, rather than just a plain sphere of various materials, they're specifically iron and oxygen. Uh, with almost nothing else. They're almost entirely pure and hollow.
Yeah. And, and because, yeah, and they're only, you know, uh, your hair is 100 microns and they're like 1.5, you know, so they're tiny, but they're intricately structured. It fascinates me every time that they're hollow, but the, the spacing and the, the uh, like the patchwork sort of north, south, east, west is fascinating. And I think, as I said, it goes back to history and that's where, you know, uh, Randall and I met on the sacred geometry front. Is because if you look at sacred geometry, it's all about geometric structures following an underlying truth. Yep. They're following a, a, uh, the framework you can't see is scaffolding that's build the things that you can see. And that's what I've been trying to work on is forget about what the building is, what the framework that created that building had to be scaffolding. You know, what, where was it and what was it? You know, I think that's the, the big thing here, Randall, with the, the truth of the matter. You know, going back in history, because it seems like that what, so.
I, I, I just did want to pause and let everybody know that we're going to give away a pass to the uh, conference. So in case people are dropping off, we want to stay on a little bit longer and I want to go deep dive on some of this. Anybody can drop if they want. I will send Kelly. I know, um, he has got a big event tomorrow, right? The biggest wildlife.
Yes.
Uh, expo and uh, fundraiser in the state that he uh, leads. Um, so he's got to go work on that. We'll let him go, but I wanted to also offer the Megafauna Pass. Beckett Fusick, uh, who is our producer and my partner, is, has the ability to give away a ticket, if I understand Beckett. And I have lost your chat, Beckett, because I had to come in and out, so I can't see chat. So however, the Megafauna Pass is to be given. Please let us know how that works and we will make sure somebody gets a free pass to the conference. Okay. So I'll wait to hear in the chat about that and continue on a little bit with the conversation, Malcolm. As soon as I hear how we give it away.
And I'll say hello, say goodbye to everyone. Great to see everyone. Can't wait to see you in Greensboro. We're really looking forward to having you. I will be, uh, I am personally invested in this conference.
He is, man. I mean, he's got better things to do.
So uh, I'm really, really excited. I am a newbie to a lot of these conversations, but uh, I am learning fast and I look forward to meeting you all. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Okay, so, okay, have a good night tomorrow night, man. I know you'll knock it out. Yeah.
You got a little treat over here.
Oh yeah, yeah. Hey, bring me one, will you? Yeah. Um, okay, now we're going to get down and dirty.
Look at that new camera tracking you, George. Look at that, his new.
Let, let me see if it'll work. We're.
It was working.
I brought George a little gift here. I'm sorry you guys can't have one uh, right out of the ice here.
Yeah, I'm going to drink one for every year. Thank you, Kelly.
We should probably sing you happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to George. Happy birthday to you.
Threw myself a party, threw myself a party. Ah, y'all are wonderful. Okay, um, Matt Bell. We don't want to miss Matt here, so we're going to kind of forward to an introduction.
Okay.
And also bring him into the conversation. Okay. Because Matt is a very significant person on the scene now and he's entirely unique. First of all, he's the host of a fantastic podcast on our subjects who has had close to a half dozen of the speakers on Limitless with Matt Bell on YouTube. Okay. And it is a well-produced podcast. He has built his own studio. It was a fantastic interview and I enjoyed doing it three weeks ago in Sarasota. He's going to be having other people too. Um, kind of like Cliff. He kind of falls in the same category as Cliff where he's a communicator about this stuff and is going to be helping us get the word out, helping us sell passes, but, but helping us because, you know, uh, not for economic reasons, but just to kind of bring some of this stuff to light. Matt, here is his lane, other than just podcaster. He uh, is a fourth generation CEO, which can't be ignored. And uh, Bell Stores in Sarasota, Florida is a very large national concern. I think in 26 states or something like that, but dominates Florida. Yeah.
Twenty-three, close enough, yeah.
Twenty-three, nice. But you're not, you know, you, every other uh, shopping center in Florida has a Bell store in it of one type or another, probably. Um, and, and he, fourth generation. So his, his, his great grandfather started it. It's over a hundred years and it's just a wonderful institution in Sarasota, Florida, has thousands of employees. So Matt's got better things to do too. But, but what he has chosen to do in addition to, you know, publicizing some of these ideas is he has become a patron to these objects.
The vases, yes, sir.
The vases, yeah.
So I'm going to turn it right over to him because it's, they're kind of, this, it's kind of hard to thumbnail this and you don't need to thumbnail it, do elevator. Go ahead and give it to us, but it's hard to explain why these are special sometimes. I get caught up trying to make the, make it seem as damn important as it is when you first explain it. But Matt, you give us a shot, buddy.
Yeah, for sure, man. Yeah. I appreciate the introduction. Excited to be here. I mean, I'm literally here for fun, you know? I mean, this is like a hobby. I quit all my other ridiculous hobbies and decided to, uh, you know, to, to explore topics that I'm interested in actually for the first time in my life. So that's what I'm doing with you guys. And so I appreciate being a part of this. You know, this, uh, this crazy crew. You guys are amazing.
You're a welcome new entr.
Yeah, appreciate it, appreciate it. And have had the, the opportunity to chat with about a half dozen of you guys so far and it's just been amazing. I think some, some really good episodes, some really good conversations. But yeah, the vases, the uh, which I used to say vases until I interviewed Ralph Ellis and uh, Johanna, you know, it was uh, changed my, changed the, the pronunciation there to something a little bit more sophisticated. But I think everybody, you know, I think everybody kind of knows the story behind them. Um, you know, and, and.
Oh, please give it then. It might be near some people. Yeah.
Okay, okay. Yeah. I mean, um, Ben Van Kirkwick, obviously he did it, does a tremendous job with this. He introduced me to this topic about a year ago and there's this class of artifacts that comes out of uh, ancient Egypt that it, it is um, hard stone vases that um, vase, it might not even be the right word. We don't really know what they were used for when they were originally created, but they're, they're absolutely beautiful. And the um, you know, I think the first really big um, kind of um, just, just discovery that came about these things was the level of precision that was involved in a lot of their manufacture. And that, as it relates to perfect circles. And so that one right there that George is holding is a, what we call the spinner vase. And it, if, if you measure that thing uh, in, in a circular form around really any level of it from bottom to, to the, to the upper lip, you're going to find that it's within, you know, uh, just three or four thousandths of an inch of perfect symmetry, a perfect roundness. And so there's a lot of them that are like that, that share that level of precision. But the really, really interesting thing that I've, that I've just discovered within the last couple of days that I've, that I've just kind of started to do a lot of work on is it goes well beyond just the roundness of the precision of these things. So these were actually created using an ancient system of measure called the royal cubit, which I think probably a lot of people are familiar with the royal cubit. It's 52.4 centimeters. There are four hands in a cubit and there are seven fingers in a hand. And so seven times four, there's twenty-eight. There are four hands in a cubit and there are seven fingers in a hand. And so seven times four, there's twenty-eight fingers in a cubit. And a finger is eighteen point seven one four millimeters, so just shy of two centimeters. And all of these things are measuring to specific finger units at, at different parts of the artifact. So the height on some of them might be four point oh fingers, the width might be six point oh fingers. The lip diameter might be three point, um, three point three, three, three fingers. The, and so, so what I'm learning by scanning these things.
But they're always kind of round numbers?
They, they are. So, so every artifact is using a specific subunit of the finger. And so every, every artifact is really using either, exactly Johanna, um, every artifact is really using like the, either the, the one, the one sixth, the one eighth or one ninth of a finger as a subunit. And they're not bouncing back and forth between those fractions in diff, in the same vase, in the same artifact. They're all using the same. So if one is a sixth on one measurement, it's going to be a six on another measurement. And I'm measuring these things in like eight different places. And so it's very like they're, they're measuring and, and I've just got a couple of them scanned. And, and so when you scan them, you get down to a thousandth of a millimeter, uh, uh, which is ridiculous, you know? And, and, and I, and I plugged this into the spreadsheet that I've created and, um, it, it's turning out that the, the tolerances that they're holding to these measurements are to within, it's the same level of precision that we see in the roundness of the artifact. So in a lot of cases, it's even significantly better than the, than the tolerances that we're seeing in the roundness of the artifact. So it's crazy. I mean, it's absolutely crazy that not only do they have it in terms of the, the product itself, the vase itself, but their, the manufacturer of these things was able to pick a specific unit of measure. And somehow, you know, with, with hand tools apparently, you know, I mean, I, I don't know how these things are not considered to be definitively machined after this, after this analysis that I'm going to release comes out. But, but, um, they're, they're hitting precise, um, uh, royal finger measurements. And, and, and so on most of them, they do use subunits. So we've also kind of discovered the subunits of the royal finger, which is a sixth, an eighth and a ninth. But on like this, this, the, the big one that I just got and measured, it's the biggest one that I have. Every measurement on it, and there's six or seven, seven or eight measurements on this thing. Every one of them is to a whole, um, royal finger. So, so it's actually, they're not, they skip the subunits on the big one. They're just going to the whole royal finger on all of it. Yeah. So it's crazy. It's, it's like mind blowing the level of, yeah, please, please.
Can I just interrupt with a really, really important information? Cause I don't know whether you saw the podcast with, uh, George and, uh, who are we with here with?
Adam. Yeah, I saw it. Adam Young, yep.
Did you see that, Matt?
I did. Yes, sir.
Yeah. Well, well, the thing is that, do you realize that the number you're talking about, the royal cubit is your five one eight four number? It's, it's the amount of distance that the, uh, moon travels in twenty-four hours, five one eight four. The royal cubit is fourteen point, uh, if I'm right, uh, five eight, uh, inches to the royal cubit.
The rehman is related to the royal cubit as the side of a square is to its diagonal. So fourteen point five eight is the rehman and twenty point six two six five is the royal cubit. So they're perfectly geometrically related.
Yeah. Great. Fantastic. So, but the point is, is that it's related to time and, and the angle that comes proven fifty-one point eight four. And the distance that moon travels its own diameter every hour. So therefore it's fifty-one thousand eight hundred and forty miles. And this is what, in that discussion, what I was thinking that those numbers all relate together. So that proves that they are, you know, the old, uh, knowledge, not, you know, and which is all to do with the, uh, the ancient measuring system. And that puts it back. And also what you've got to point out was you can't do that thing. But anyway, I wanted to put that over because that's really important. Time itself is directly related to the cubit.
Yeah, really cool.
Hey, we might need to walk. Listen, this is interesting. This may, listen, if all this stuff is true, and I don't think we'd be on this call unless we thought it was a damn good, that it's all true. Then that's some of the most important communication in modern history right there. Yeah. That you've got a guy, Matt, God bless him, who has gone out the, and measured this with, these things with tools. This is not one. This is three D printed by Matt, actually. Okay. Believe me, I wouldn't be welding it around. In fact, when I was in Matt's conference room at their big corporate headquarters, that he had them all out on the table, you know? He's got more than fifty of them, each of them priceless. I mean, these are truly priceless. I said, Matt, you need to get a shag carpet in here. Ugly as it would be, just put a shag carpet. Because at some, some knucklehead's going to drop it.
And, uh. A lot of them would put dents in the floors right now, you know, there's.
Malcolm can help tie this to sacred geometry as, and Randall can as well. And I think that's really, really important. And hey, Cliff, I didn't want to leave you out of the fun here, buddy. And I don't mean to put in a shotgun marriage, but I tell you, it would be interesting to have an earth ancient, so I'm kind of that work being done with the vases. Does it interest you?
We're going to have Ben on, he's already scheduled for March, so we'll promote the conference when, when he's on the program. So we'll be great. Yeah. No, I've been following the vases since Chris Dunn introduced them. Probably ten years ago. And then I was in Sakara last year and an archaeologist, uh, was introduced to me. And he sold me the top of one of the vases. I couldn't have taken it out of the country if it was a complete vase. But I was shocked at the perfection of the lip on this vase. It's huge.
Cliff, that's funny you say that. That's what I've asked is, and I asked Matt and others, I want just a piece of one. I can't afford a whole one. But I, you know, give me a broken one, just exactly.
Adam, Adam was on the show, this is probably eight years ago, and he started, he, he bought one of the early collectors pieces back then was, which was a few thousand now.
Adam Young ones?
You can't catch them for under ten to fifteen. Some of them are as much as twenty thousand dollars. And it's like, my God. Uh, and the saying, the saying goes that apparently when they first discovered this cache of, uh, artifacts in one of the levels of the, of the Dozier pyramid, there were over thirty thousand of these remarkable, it's like they were collecting them and stashing them away.
Yeah, from a previous age. Yeah.
Yeah. And, and it's funny, and they're slowly coming out and it's great to hear Matt collecting these because it's like, I don't know anybody who has the volume that you just showed, George.
Well, no one does. Matt is, you know, yeah. Yeah, you've become a very significant collector. And I hope it's okay to say that there is no retail market anymore until it comes past Matt.
Get them on eBay. According to, uh, Adam, you could get them on eBay, but now it's a Sotheby's show, which means that they're.
And.
And grand for.
Matt and Adam are kind of responsible for that, that it's a small enough market that it doesn't take a whole lot of action. Can you speak to that?
That's why I feel very gratified to, I, I paid fi- five, fifty bucks for the top of a vase.
That's what I, you know?
Yeah, you're not going to get much providence out of a vase from eBay, I don't think, but, but.
No.
Um, but yeah, the prices have gone up significantly in the last year. I mean, they, they've gone up probably, you know, three times and, or four times in the last year, really since Ben's talking about.
Your last piece, what, what can you?
Um, yeah, um, you can ask, but I, I don't, I don't want to get into all that stuff.
The other way to go about that would be is it one dollar sign or is it three dollar sign?
I did good on crypto a couple of years ago, so I reinvested in this.
Hey, real quick, and I want to continue talking, but just in case the fella drops off, the winner of the free megaphone a pass is Mr. Nick Moore. So here it is for Nick for joining us today. We look forward to seeing him. All right. Yeah. Nick Moore wins the megaphone a pass. We'll do that a little more smoothly next time. I was kind of shut out of the chat there for a while, but I get it now. So congratulations, Nick. Um, we, uh, look forward to being in touch with you and seeing you in June, buddy. Okay. Let's move on with the conversation. If y'all are still into it, man, I think we're starting to dig some things up.
Hey, Matt, I, just another thing, Matt, did you ever use that, you know, the Tibetan singing bowls? Have you ever, have you got full vase that's completely intact?
Do I, do I have a, yeah, I've got, got lots of them that are completely intact. Yeah. Yeah. And I have tried that, that, um, to use a speaker and hold the speaker over the top of it and change the frequency and see where it, where the, um, the, the, uh, resonant, um, frequency, um, what is it called? I've, I've tried that test and, and I've just, I'm just barely like on the forefront of that. I've really been spending most of the time, you know, trying to, um, get them scanned, get them back and check how they fit into this, um, finger system, how they fit into this measuring system.
Specifically, I don't know if you've ever seen it in the, when you, and sometimes they use a stick or a rock.
Oh, sure. Yeah.
Run around the rehman like a, a glass where you put your finger on it. Because they're, they're the water.
God, I just don't want to hear from a crack to the ground.
Here's one I made earlier. Ah, yeah.
Right? On the outside. On the outside. Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Just got it. So, okay.
That's beautiful, man.
Well, I wondered whether it was a plasma generator, because if, what I've seen of singing bowls in Tibet from my teacher there when I was sixteen, he had a singing bowl and it actually, the water jumps up out of the surface when you hit a certain resonance.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
A reverse raindrop. It's quite amazing. Or like effus- effervescence. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I just wondering about that side of it. Yeah.
You know, jumping raindrops.
So play around with the frequency when it's filled with a, with a liquid, fill, fill it with water and, and play around with the frequency.
Correct. And you can always use the, like, you know, and, cause that's why I think that may be a clue. Because if it's, if it's running to sacred geometry and time itself, then it actually, if, and you might buy a few of those Tibetan singing bowls, because it's quite fascinating to literally see the, like, just a flat bit of water and with the resonance drops coming out like effervescence.
Yeah, I, I've done several videos on this actually, and I'm, over the last couple of years. And it produces this soliton structure, but it's actually a, a ring vortex in the water that can then lift off and jump out. And it, it almost like acts like it has anti-gravity. Um, but, uh, yeah, so, and I've got nice video. What I did is I actually went into a shop, um, near me and they had about, uh, fifteen singing bowls. And I, I filled them all up with water and went around. And some of them are terrible at doing this and some of them are not terrible. The machined ones tend to be very bad. They produce very pure tones. You kind of want the ones that have the, the two beat frequencies, uh, that you should get in a really high quality, hand beaten bowl. Uh, and then they seem to be very good and not all of them, like I say, even when they're those quality, they don't tend to all have this ability to really lift the water out. Um, but they did some studies in, uh, California. Um, and that there's no hydrodynamic model that they have an equation for that easily explains these things and how, how they come out. I would agree with Malcolm and have said before that I, I think it does produce coherent matter and more density of it. Coherent matter already exists in water. Um, uh, it, there's a guy called Preparata who wrote a whole book on it. The coherent grains, ground state of matter. And at normal room temperature and even up into hundreds of degrees, there's still a fair proportion of water that's acting in a coherent state. Water's far more magical than people give it credit for. And I know there's a lot of people that struggle to give it credit. But, uh, your vases, I think, um, and, and, and George tried to get me to.
Oh, we've lost Malcolm.
He'll be back.
I've always caught him. He's a gazelle anyways. He's an intellectual and physical gazelle. He's just bouncing around the earth and, you know.
I don't know where he is after time, actually.
Yeah.
I think it's the way he likes it.
I tell you, he takes a lot of damn grief, man. And I, it, it, it bugs me. I've spent seventy days with him over the last year. Johanna spent a lot of time with him. You've now taken the baton and will probably spend more than that over the next year with him. And we're not doing that because it's not some commercial ripoff scheme. I mean, I wouldn't even say that with Malcolm on, but he'll hear this later, but that's a, that's what people are saying. Okay. Maybe we're all wrong. Maybe we've fooled ourselves, but it's not in pursuit of money. I've, I've met few people that could care less about money than Malcolm does.
He's coming back. Quick.
Here he comes.
I'll go again if you want to talk about me. It's okay.
I had a question though, Matt.
Please.
Have you tried drinking beer out of them?
Uh, no, I have not.
Well, that's an idea. And could you make us?
I volunteer.
All replica little things and the party, we can all have a drink.
Absolutely.
You never know, could be the key.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm bringing them to Cosmic Summit. I've got.
This may be the first time and God knows how many millennia.
Matt, what, what's inspired you to start?
Happy birthday to me.
Uh, what inspired me? Uh, just, just trying to learn more about them. I mean, I felt like it was this huge mystery. I felt like there, there wasn't really another way to kind of get connected with one of the biggest mysteries that was out there. And this one for me really grabbed me for some reason and it, and it was available. It's like, these things are there and we can take advantage of that and we can collect them and we can analyze them. And it's a new way of analyzing something that's never really been looked at before, you know? Because we haven't had CT scanners to be able to, you know, that technology to be able to analyze that data.
To that point, i- i- isn't it true? Tell me if I got this wrong. But you almost to make something so perfect, you have to have a tool that will analyze it in the detail sufficient to recognize the perfection.
Yeah.
In other words, we've only had CT scanners that could show you the perfection of them. Let's call it like tops thirty years. Is that fair?
Yeah.
So how did they, five, six thousand years ago at least? How did they know? You can't make something more perfect than your ability to measure its perfection. Fair?
I think that's fair. Yeah. I mean, it's a huge mystery. If, if you talk, you know, when I was talking to Chris Dunn and, and Alex Dunn about this, that's exactly what came out of their mouths and, you know, those guys know what they're talking about. So, um, yeah, you need a tool that's more precise than the, than what the tool produces.
Okay. We won't physical, hold on just a sec, Ken. I want to point out something that I just noticed. We want to people to see things at the Cosmic Summit, not just hear things. And we've got a couple of good examples this year. Malcolm, I've kind of assumed, but I'm not sure. I've asked you straight up. Do you want to set up a thunderstorm generator?
Absolutely.
Okay, buddy. Okay. Well, we've got a one acre room. We're going to put it dead center. Okay. It's not the centerpiece. Well, we'll be the centerpiece of the property.
I had a diving boat. We're going to kick the exhaust.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's a big enough room that if you're dead wrong, right? If, if you're dead wrong, we'll still be safe because there's a lot of volume in there, right? Thirty-five foot ceilings, three, four hundred feet wide.
Two hours last time. Yeah. You can only stay two minutes without the machine on and two hours with, with it on, eh, Bob?
No, Malcolm put me into a room for a whole afternoon and walked away and then came back to see if I was still alive at the end of it.
I want to hear about Johanna and Bob testing the carbon monoxide, but Ken, you had a question or a thought, buddy? What are you thinking there, man?
Oh, I, I, I was just gonna, uh, point out that, uh, most of the Egyptian vases are made of carbonate rock. And the Egyptians did actually have, um, metal tools that were a lot sharper and to manufacture, uh, the bowls. And they had the drilling, uh, capabilities as well. So.
But not, um, these ones, these ones actually are pre-dynastic. The, the stuff in the, in the Egyptian archive kind of doesn't match.
And they're not carbonate, um, Ken, they're, they're solid granite.
Yeah. But the, um, so these are funerary objects, correct?
They were found underneath the step pyramid, uh, very early dynasty, but they predate all of the Egyptian. You can see that the Egyptians kind of mimic the style of them later in alabaster and softer, um, stone. But they never replicated the original ones that were found in the burial. Yeah. So they, they were like inherited by early dynasties, but they're, they're pre-dynastic vases, which is also like, what? They're super early.
And the way I understand it, they're found in the pre-dynastic graves. Now, these are before the pharaohs. That's what pre-dynastic means. So none of this stuff going on, no hieroglyphs, no nothing. The culture, very mysterious, you know, the people in Egypt before the pharaohs. And they're found in their graves, but they're found with alabaster jars as well. And then they might have one of these with it, almost like those people received it from someone else. And they were making alabaster jars, imitating something that even was pre, pre-dynastic.
And also George, when I, when I was in, uh, Egypt, I, we went to a place where there was native people making all the stone jars. And they were giving us these amazing examples of how exactly you do it with the tools that they had back in the day. And I came up to them and was like, great, you, you're going to know this. And I was like, how do you make this? And I showed the, the vases, Matt, and they went, no idea. We can't make that.
Cause they're all making it out of alabaster, aren't they?
Yeah. And I was like, but how do we make it out of the, because whatever the tool is, it needs to be able to cut through the, the granite and the quartz at the same time. And you're going to be cutting through like soft and hard and soft and hard. And it's, there's, at the moment it's unanswerable. Like what tool? It's definitely not a tool that we have accounted for in the archive so far. So it's like, whoa.
So Matt, I've got a, one question and then actually two questions. So Matt, I've got a, one question, and then, actually, two questions. So the first one is, what's the wall thickness you typically see on some of these?
It really varies. The one that, that George has held up is two mil, two millimeters, that's the thinnest one that I have. It's two millimeters at the, at the widest point, and then it's about four millimeters around the rest of it, but they vary. I mean, they, they're, they're completely different. I mean, you could have, you know, the, the, the largest ones that I have might be an inch thick, you know, on the walls, to an inch and a half potentially if they're on the, on the really big, heavy ones, but, you know, typically, if you've got one that's six inches tall, it might be a half an inch thick, something like that. And, and the wall thickness is also very consistent, you know, so if you measure the wall thickness on one side of the artifact, on one wall and measured on the other side of the artifact, the, 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 um, the variance there is, is usually a very, very tight variance. It's usually, you know, if, if you see symmetry in the rest of the object, you're going to see symmetry and a lack of variance in the walls as well, so it's usually a good correlation.
And how does the finish compare on the inside to the outside?
The, the finish on the inside, for all the genuine, authentic ones, they, almost every one of them has tool marks on the inside, and so you can see, you can see kind of a round, a round hole in the bottom, not really a hole, but you can tell where the drill would have initially cored it.
Right.
And so, so, you know, it's like a thin core that they, that they dig out to the bottom, and then from that point, they take some tool that spins around the inside to remove the material and to make it wider on the inside.
I'm sorry, I can't do a screen share because it freezes up, and then I can't see all, so this is a bad hack. But that is Matt placing a flashlight. And you can see the light through the solid granite.
That's coming through the crystals.
That's.
Yeah, we can, Malcolm, go right ahead.
Yeah, so I just had notification that the Strike Foundation website for the first time is gone down. We do a good job.
Contested, yeah. I've had mine attacked too.
Yep, the first time for two years that that site has gone down.
Now, that's unfortunate to hear. It's a lot of important information on there.
Oh, yeah, unfortunately, George, you have yours now, strikefoundation.org.
Well, we've got a mirror of yours too, if you want it. We just need to, we need to put that up. Go ahead, Ken.
I was just gonna say, believe it or not, you can cut granite with, with wood, a hollow wood, like a reed, and you put sand inside it, and then you lubricate it with water or oil, and using a bow drill. And again, it can be a little bow drill, or the, the tube can be very large. You can cut right through granite. It doesn't really take that long.
But Ken, as a scientist, do you think you'd be able to achieve tolerances to one, two thousandth of a millimeter?
Well, we, we got to remember, what we see archaeologically are the keepers. What we're seeing cached are those that are keep, what we're not seeing is the, and, and what ends up on the, the market for sale are, are the ones that people want, that have this precision. What we're missing is all the discards, and that's what's found in the archaeological records, is the ones that didn't make it. But it is fascinating, no question about it, having the, to replicate stone vases without a lathe. I mean, with a lathe, they're very easy, but without it.
Two thousand years before the lathe, any, any evidence of the lathe, but even with a primitive lathe, I don't, you, you can't really make that, you can't really get to that level of precision with a primitive, it's just too shaky, too wobbly, you can't form perfect circles to within, you know, a hundredth of a millimeter. I mean, you're, obviously, your eye can't see that, but certainly, lay the side with, with hand tools, that's just like impossible. I mean, you can't, you can't achieve that with, with.
Can you agree with that? Don't you think about it? Two thousandth of a millimeter, that's not, it came out accidentally perfect.
Yeah, I'd say a hundredth of a millimeter is probably some of the best that, but.
Excuse me, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, maybe, you know, a couple of thousands of, you know, you might have three, three ten thousandths of an inch or something, might be some of the best, you know, which is, yeah.
Matt, Matt, are you, are you using scanning electron microscopy to measure the, look at the surface inside and out?
Um, we're using a CT scanner to look at the surface inside and out.
Yeah, the CT won't, um, I, I would, in my humble opinion, if I was to go do it, I'd use a scanning electron microscope rather than a CT scan. I mean, CT scan will give you the overall morphology, but it won't be able to give you the actual surface morphology, the texture.
There's a challenge with that, Dr. Kenneth, as you probably well know, you, you need to probably do it destructively. We, we, I regularly use a large stage, and, but we, because it's granite, you'll have to coat it with gold or, or something, so you'll need a cliff sample. So Cliff, I'll give you sixty bucks for yours.
Hey, I know.
I actually have two. I have this lip, and then I have a beautiful little cup that was perfectly cut in half, and it is a, my God, how they did it is beyond me, but it's.
Well, what the doctor is saying is a good idea, because if there were particular metals used in the machining, you'd be able to see those in the grooves.
Right.
However small the grooves are.
It's EDS, but I, I suspect, in my humble opinion, they were using sand. But that's just my humble opinion, nothing more. But what you can do, if you don't want it to be destructive, the same type of casting material you use to cast teeth, to replicate teeth, you can actually press that on the vase, because you don't want to destroy the vase, and peel that off, and then that under, yeah.
Certainly, you know, I think the SEM idea is great, just to see what the micro tool marks are on it, and, and that, that has yet to be done, it's interesting. But Ken, I'm telling you, go, go look at Ben Van Kirkwick, one of your fellow speakers' videos, and walk through the actual history of these things. These are not, uh, it's not cherry picking, that Matt, yeah, the, the, these are not, you would find imperfect ones made from granite, and you do not find the throwaways. You know, they, they, they're all coming up not equally perfect. Not only that, but they encode math. Could y'all speak to that a little bit? Maybe you first, Matt?
Yeah, I'm not, you know, I'm not completely sure on the, on the, um,
Yeah.
on, on that component of it, you know, the, what, what I'm finding in the measurements is, is again, just this, this subunit of the royal cubit, but I know that Adam's artifact does, when you, when you look at Adam's artifact, for example, the, the mouth opening is, and the guy who, Mark, from unsigned.io.io, who did the analysis on Mark's artifact, didn't even realize this at the time that he was doing the measurements. He, he said that the mouth opening of Adam's artifact was the number one, which is brilliant. He came up with that as like the key number for the whole thing, that unlocked the whole thing, and he based everything else off of that opening. What he didn't realize is that it's one royal finger. It's, it's, yeah, that's the spinner vase that you're holding, George, but what he didn't realize is that, that it's actually one royal finger. So he was right. It was one, it was one unit of measure that they were basing the whole thing off, but it was one royal finger, and, and it's, it's actually, the, the dimension of it is fifty-eight point nine millimeters, and so that is pi royal fingers. If you take three point one four seven times eighteen point seven one four, you get fifty-eight point nine, which is pi royal fingers. So it's a, it's a royal finger, which is eighteen point seven one, eighteen point seven one four millimeters, times three point one four, you get the dimensions of the mouth opening of that artifact. And when you look at the neck of his artifact, it's, it's phi, phi squared. So that's kind of, you know, and, and potentially, when you look at the, um, uh, the, the, maybe there's, there's one other that might have just a bit of sacred geometry in it. I think it's the foot of Adams, that's pi over phi squared. But, but that, that's all, that's the only places that I've seen geometry come into this. I'm, I'm not, you know, I, he's, he's talked about the radial transversal or traversal pattern, and that's a, I'm, I'm not sure the validity of that yet. I think that the, um, that the jury's still out on the radial transversal pattern, so. That's, that's my take on the geometry, that almost all of these are measured in subunits of the royal cubit as opposed to sacred geometry. I'm not finding pi and phi embedded in many of the other ones.
Not, huh.
Matt, there's one more thing that Ken brought up, I think, which is fantastic. If you do the SEM, I don't, has anyone done any thin section work on those? I mean, it's like, are you going to be like me, you're going to be crying when you do it? To cut up my perfectly good usable spears. But the point being is that if it, if they're cut by the plasmoids themselves under instruction, as per King Solomon, cut the blocks, there will be, I believe, Bob, do you think there'd be, there'd be tracks left in the zircons, wouldn't there?
I would think that there would be a certain glossy phase, and I, I think that possibly it could have been used for finishing. So this is why I'm interested in comparing the rough machining on the inside and any compounds, or, or, sorry, any metals that might have been used for cutting that, or even powders, it might have been diamond powder, it might have been sand of various types. And then the difference on the outside, as to whether that is still just finer and finer grains that have done the polishing, or whether it's actually a, maybe an oxyhydrogen gas type process.
Yeah, the plasmoids have cut it. I mean, and it's perfect, so the two things, which is fantastic, scanning electron microscope, and some thin section work, you know, like polished in sections, to see across it, to see the difference between the outside and inside. If you're using plasmoids on the outside, you'll have energy particles which will leave tracks in the zircons and in the crystal lattice.
So it's worth smashing one for science.
No, no, that's what I said, I'll give sixty, I'll give sixty dollars.
Let's get one from Sikara. Who brought the fragment from Sikara?
I'm looking at Matt's face when you just said that. Matt's kind of twisted there.
I have a piece of polished red granite from the Giza Plateau that I've been saving. I nicked it from the Giza Plateau, and I've been saving it.
But you're not telling anyone, right?
I'm not telling anyone, just, just everybody here, right? But I'm, I've, I've got it to give to someone if they ever wanted to do anything like that, to like have a look at it and see how they polish the, the red.
Maybe we can sort something out, Johanna.
See how flat it is. I've got it there.
And I have a sample, I have a sample of the limestone, which we did some thin section work on, that my grandfather, in the First World War, Australians, they were knockabout blokes, and they knocked a pyramid about as well, pyramid about, pyramid, but he brought it to the box. We did thin section work on it, of the pyramid blocks, from that.
We've got the granite and the limestone, great.
So, Matt, can I, can I ask if you've done a Mohs hardness test on it?
Yeah, but that proved, sorry. If it was, that proved it was, it was a geopolymer. But mind you, there's no provenance, except that my grandfather climbed the pyramids and nicked it. Provenance is a problem.
Yeah, and if anybody has access to, or knows how I could connect with anybody who might be able to do one of those scans to try to find out if there is any of that microscopic material from a tool, please connect me with them. I'd, I'd love to, to get that tested.
Bob.
We, we can, yeah.
Yeah, the YD team could do it, or Bob could do it.
Yeah. I mean, if you want to just section one with a diamond saw to get into.
But they're easy enough to make, right, Ken? He said he just, all you need is just some mist, a little bit of saw, I mean, big deal.
It's all right, simply get back together, no one will know, it's fine.
Yeah.
Sand bow drilling began around the fourth or fifth century BCE. Just to give you some idea how long it's been around, but the cast method, using dental casting on the inside, if you don't want to cut one, and then you take the peel, and as George said, I, I think the, um, the comet research group is a perfect group to do it. Malcolm Lacant could do it, Alan West could do it, Chris Moore could do it, so, but it'd be.
I got my hands full, but the, the, they're, Bob's finding of crenulated pharaohs spirals, you know, in the, they are iron-based, aren't they, most of them, Bob?
They are always.
Just to make sure, yeah, they always are.
Hundred percent iron and oxygen only. The, the rest of it comes around the outside, the ball.
And ju- just, just to make, finish the point, that the, the fundamental evidence for, uh, let's call it a key piece, of the evidence for the Younger Dryas impact is, uh, uh, crenulated pharaohs spirals. And now the fundamental evidence for atomic reactions occurring in the thunder, thunderstorm generator are crenulated iron spirals. I find that very strange. From my perspective, following both of these things, one for years, one more recently, when Bob came up with his wonderful videos that showed the spirals, I said, I know those spirals, I've been following them since two thousand and five, when I got involved in this. It's, it's what we find, and I, I don't know the relationship, but it certainly is odd.
When you come into the atmosphere, it's very hot.
Yeah.
And to get, you get plasma formed, which, which is the charge separation, and you get extreme hydrodynamic vortices. And so you will see the same things produced as, as Malcolm is producing in his, and we can produce, a three-year-old can make them in an ultrasonic water bath for thirty-five dollars. So like.
Fantastic.
I swear.
Do you get iridium?
Go on.
Oh, do you get iridium with them, though?
Uh, so, the process in theory will create any element, but it tends to have a hard stop at iron. I don't know whether you would be able to create it in a water base, because you don't necessarily get the intense cavitation.
But the iridium, Ken, would have come from the extraterrestrial object itself, not the reaction.
It's just the, it's, it's, I think it's the most dense material.
Yeah.
Platinum in our spirals, and, and the crystal, on the, on the outside of them. But, and often, you know, we even see crystalline platinum with our micro spirals.
Yeah, these are typically coming from the cosmos. Those are a good signature of those, that's the conventional thinking. But there are people that have, have used the Lennar process in cavitation. One is called Leclerc, and he claimed to produce every element in the periodic table, and there's another group that unfortunately, he's died, called Esti Ademenko, he wrote a seven-hundred-page book called Controlled Nuclear Synthesis, you can get it, it's a very expensive book. But he produced every element in the periodic table, just a three-hundred-year discharge into any transition metal target. And so synthesizing elements terrestrial on Earth that occur supposedly and only in supernovas, that are then the source of cosmic injections into our environment that, that are then found on the surface, whereas the, the historical ones would be found in the core along with the iron, and that's why you wouldn't see iridium and these kind of metals in great abundance on, on, on the crust. There are now methods that appear to be able to synthesize these elements, and arguably, that could still be synthesized in the process of entry into the atmosphere. So I think this is why it's very interesting to look at the, what's going on with these attempts to see what is in asteroids and meteoroids out in the cosmos. This is incredibly important science, we all need to really pay attention to, to understand that whether it's there, or it's actually generated on the incoming process. It's actually made on the way in. That would be my commentary on that. I'm still want to answer from Matt about the hardness of the.
Hey, let me add one thing about it coming in. Okay, no, go ahead, Matt, go ahead. No, no, I don't mean to step on my own speakers.
Oh, no, you're good, you're good. Yeah, I mean, on the, on the Mohs hardness, yeah, the, the, we, we know what the vases are made of. We know that each of them is made of one single block of a specific rock, and we know what the Mohs hardness is of those specific rocks. I mean, most of them are, which is usually between a six and a half and a seven and a half.
Okay.
Yeah, now, some of them are brescia, which is, uh, which, the, the brescia ones that, that are the most common are a combination of white calcite and red limestone, or red calcite and white limestone, whatever it is, it's, it's, those are both about a three, and so those are, those are pretty soft. But Malcolm's point, when he was on with, with, with George and, and Adam Young pointed out, that they all have the same specific gravity for, for, it's all a very, very similar specific gravity, and, and it's a pretty tight range, actually, between basalt, granite, andesite, porphyry, diorite, dolerite, limestone, calcite, it's all pretty much, you know, between like a two point six five and a two point eight five on, on specific gravity, which is the density as it relates to water, which is a one point oh, so.
Okay, it's interesting you say seven point five, because like, of course, granite can be up to about eight, so you're, you're at the upper end of that.
Eight then, yeah, yeah.
Um, but if, are you aware of the work in bi-disks in China? Because I've seen these things that, and also other type of jade being carved. Jade can be up to Mohs hardness of seven, and the bi-disks go back five thousand four hundred years, and some of the things that are carved out of jade are absolutely spectacular. So I'm just wondering, have you compared the kind of craftsmanship that's occurred in China from five thousand four hundred years ago to the present day? Because these are similar, you know, when you've got a Mohs. Because these are similar, you know, when you've got a Mohs hardness of seven, that probably covers a large proportion of your um, and it might be the technology that was developed to carve that type of jade was employed in carving these these particular um, phases, bases.
Yeah. Yeah, very easily could be. I've not ever handled any of any of the Chinese artifacts, only only these. But yeah, yeah, you're absolutely right. That's a really good point.
They're more expensive, by the way.
Are they? Okay. Yeah, that's probably why. Uh, I gotta stick to the one crazy hobby, yeah.
One thing about Mohs hardness, it refers to the minerals. Or, for example, granite is composed of three minerals, quartz, feldspar, and mica. And of course, the kind of feldspar and the kind of mica may vary. Mica is very soft. You can cut it with your fingernail. Mohs hardness of two, feldspar's at six, and quartz is at seven. So um, so you're absolutely right, Bob. So you're the hardest part of the granite, which would be the quartz, um, which would be the same hardness as the sand, um, would be a seven.
This is the, logistically, the hardest thing I see in manufacturing those.
I know what Matt's thinking.
Because as you're carving it, you've got a hot, soft bit and you've got a hard bit. So if you're using a hard thing to run across something that has variable hardness, you see jade is much more contiguous in its it's rather than than this. How do you carve something that has a wide variety?
There you go. See, that's one of the mysteries. And I'm sorry, I have to do this. But those are two different.
They've got inclusions of different materials.
There are inclusions that are dramatically different densities and hardness, right? Or not density, but hardness. So it begs the question, how did the tool adjust itself?
And this is where I think it might be a a a sound resonance that's doing.
There you go. There's a real one. Okay.
That's the real one.
Yeah. Be careful, brother.
Please drop it, and then you can send me a sample.
Yeah, exactly. You spread it out, draw it into eight pieces, and we'll all get one.
We'll all pay you fifty dollars. That's a good idea.
No deal.
One more important thing, one more, because I've been going in a nutshell. So while I'm in, one really important thing, the most important thing in this conversation, and humanity, is that all the blocks in the pyramid have monocyte in there, all radioactive, so they can ionize. I believe that the vases would all come from the source rock, which is with monocyte. And you see that in thin section work. So probably pick it up on a very sensitive. In fact, Bob, you've got the to rate, to measure for, then you'd ionize the water, which changes the whole game with the uh, yeah, ultrasics.
You have a little device like this. This is, this is a spectrometer, and it can see the gamma that would come out. I don't know if the granite granite has any thorium or uranium in it, does it? Do you, have you looked for, looking for?
Well, it does. It has monocyte.
No, I mean, it does, does Matt's, Matt's granite have it in?
Isn't it as one?
Would have, but with.
There there's all different types of granite. I mean, it's it's every granite you can imagine. There's there's about four of them that are the red as one granite. And then, you know, it ranges all different types.
So have you looked at the activity of them?
But.
No. What? No.
Cool. One for the list. Matt?
Yes.
I remember, I might be completely wrong, but I, in my memory, there is some very old graves that have these vases and uh, the bowls and 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 I'm talking like closer to the Younger Dryas than to the dynastic Egyptians. That's how old uh, some of this stuff is. I'm gonna need to check my sources on that. But in my mind, some of those, some of the vases go back.
Ben mentioned that. Yeah, Ben mentioned that in one of his videos, and it was a fourteen thousand year old grave. And if you.
Okay, yeah, I was gonna say twelve thousand, but they are, but they're getting, they're getting up to the Younger Dryas. And I was like, that's interesting how this all does kind of link together, just as we're coming into land here.
I I I asked him where he found that. And and because if you look, if you search the internet, that's nowhere to be found. But he found it in in a museum in Egypt. And he he knows exactly where it is in the museum. And there's a picture of it, and the site is currently flooded by the dam that they built. But that's not on, I nobody, I can't find that anywhere. I'd love to.
That's probably where I saw it then, because I first went to Egypt with Ben. And we were, uh, yeah, we did a lot of museums. But but I remember seeing that stuff and going, whoa, we're talking like twelve thousand years old pots. What are they doing with this?
Right, right.
Speaking of Egypt, um, we're missing some folks on here, and they could have just uh, skipped for uh, much worse reasons than this. But, and not skip, this is totally optional speaker calls every time. But we have some great friends and some speakers who are over in the old country right now. And that's Ben Van Kirkwick, who we're all friends with and Uncharted X. And he is in Egypt, leading a tour with the Brothers of the Serpent, Kyle and Russ. And they've also got with them Brad Young. So those are all four speakers at the summit, and they are in Egypt right now. We tried to get them on this call. It didn't work for today. I wanted to mention that the next communication we're gonna do from the summit will be a foxhole podcast. And we're gonna bring them in from Egypt. Okay, and do a live interview with them in Egypt. They're there for at least another four or five weeks, and they're gonna have some downtime between tours. So we're bringing them in live from Egypt. Um, uh, Randall, I'd like you to join. I'm sorry, you didn't get a chance to talk much more today. But I think at that one, we can have, yeah, appreciate that. Um, that we can have a good back and forth with our buddies over there, you know, with Brad. I know he's having a fantastic time. And between the the snakes and and Ben, they've been over there so much that they're getting really next level on Egypt, man. I mean, and we want to hear from them both as soon as we can, and then obviously also in June. So um, y'all have been very gracious today to show up.
Thanks, George.
Um, I want to stress, this is a live stream ticket launch. So you can go now. If you cannot come to Greensboro, please do it now, because it indicates support and interest in our subjects. It also brings a little income. This thing is underwater till it's not underwater. And the live stream is available at cosmicsummit.com. I think it's about three quarters down the page now. And you can also go up to the top. You can submit the posters, as I described, the academic style posters, three of whom will be chosen to speak. Um, you can also volunteer there and fill out an application, tell us what your superpowers are, and let's try to put them to work, because this is a community and a global effort. And also exhibitors and vendors. If you've got something that you want to sell or show off at the Cosmic Summit, we've got some of the best space, you know, uh, in Eastern North America for to do so. And we'll make it very prominent and make sure a lot of people see it and the right kind of people. Um, so live stream, live stream, live stream is what you're gonna be hearing from us for the next couple of months. But I've also got to say, uh, buy those in person tickets, because this is a special, special event, as we proved last year, and we're gonna top it this year. Do we have any kind of final comments? Anything I missed sitting on the top of your head?
Quickly, when is that foxhole?
Um, I've tried to get a date from them today. Hell, they could have answered, since I've been sitting here. But yeah, we hadn't scheduled it as of today. I was hoping to have one so I could say, and I asked them, I don't mean to be too tedious here, but I might have gotten an answer. Let's see. Egypt trip. Not yet. Hard to figure out right now. But it will be someday in the second week of the downtime. We don't have exact dates now, uh, and the tour's been very busy for all of us. Yep. So when they wind down between tours, we're gonna have them on. And um, that's gonna be a fun episode. I cannot wait. Thank you all. Thank you particularly Cliff Dunning. You're kind of new new to the family here.
Thanks.
Thank you, George. It was great to meet everybody. I look forward to.
See you in June.
Yeah, and Matt Bell, who has become, you know, an absolute favorite brother of the family, man. He is already in it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, George, man. Appreciate you putting this on. This is fun, yeah.
And 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 the Shaman Malcolm Bendall, th- this is special stuff, man. Thank you for coming.
One final thing?
Yeah, sure.
One, 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 one final thing, the the granites in the King's Chamber are radioactive and are producing radon all the time. And that makes them both hot and an ionization source. And that's not to be forgotten. And red granites are generally have monocyte, and that explains it all. And that's why they use it.
Folks, picture Malcolm and these other folks, Bob, maybe have Matt in there, who knows, in a classroom all day for eight hours, subject to your questioning, you know, in an intimate atmosphere. We're gonna have a great time with this. We're gonna deep dive. Um, thank you all very, very much. I love everybody, but I particularly love those that love the Cosmic Summit, man, because we're doing the right thing, you know.
Thanks, George, for putting this all together.
Thanks a lot, George, for putting it on, buddy.
Ah, thanks for, George.
We're all blessed with these ideas, aren't we? Thank you so much.
I'll see you in June.
See y'all.
Along, everyone.